Good evening. It's five o'clock on the dot. So we're going to try and get started. Would you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? And I would ask, after the pledge, we would like to pause for just a brief moment of silence and reflection from the events this past weekend. Assassination attempt and knowing that a citizen's life was lost. And I hope that you will join me in just a brief moment of reflection and prayer following the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and every right to govern all.
Thank you all very much. Welcome to our live. Yes, Ray and Pam, speaking there. We got a high performance tonight. So thank you. Counsel, our amazing support staff and crew and committee members and agenda presenters here today as well. Before we start, just as a reminder, for our approved meeting guidelines that were approved at the beginning of this year, we obviously will run through our agenda, which certainly has been made public. But public comments actually for our agenda are to be given at the end. You, if you'd like to make a public comment, you do not have to be on the agenda, but we will call for those at the end of the meeting. Each individual who'd like to speak will get a chance to come to the podium. Please list your name and address and we'll be given about three minutes to speak. So we'll hold those public comments. Obviously, conducting business here, council members will have a chance to ask questions of agenda presenters, but we'll hold comments till the end of the meeting. And we'd like to ask approval for our minutes from our June meeting. Have all council members received those via email?
I've motioned that they accept the data approval.
Motion from Ray, second from Chris. Any additions, corrections, changes? Proposed. Okay. With that motion and second, all those in favor of approval of our June minutes, say aye. And those opposed, select sign. All right.
I'll stay from those minutes since I wasn't here.
Pam was on out of town at our June meeting. I'm going to strike that right with you and bring that back on this way. Signing for approval of those June minutes. And so we're going to jump right into our first normal agenda item. And I know they are here. It's just hard to see with a big record. So if they're in the hall, we'll shout out. First on our agenda is actually the innkeeper's tax. And with us this evening, we have Andrew Forster from Visit Madison, as well as Trevor Crafton, who is acting on that board. So we're going to give you guys a chance to chat about the proposed innkeeper's tax that this group has seen. We know that's gone through legal counsel for suggestions and joint effort with your board as well. So share with us a little bit about the reasoning behind this increase in income.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate your consideration of of this ordinance to take a look at the innkeeper's tax and increase that. As you know, Madison has seen, Madison Jefferson County as a whole have seen an increase in tourism over the last five to 10 years. We're now seeing the last numbers we have data for in 2022 have over $60 million in visitor spending happening in Jefferson County according to Rockport Analytics study. And so you're seeing a greater interest, especially since COVID. People wanting to get out. They're not going to go much to big cities. They're wanting to find places a little bit closer to home. And so Madison has been a recipient of that. And so we are seeing a lot more interest, a lot more tourists. But one of the things that becomes a problem with that is that the innkeeper's tax collections don't keep up with the demand for services and the needs. And whether that's amenities, whether it's parking, whether it's trolley service, one thing that we get hit up for all the time, whether that's between our hotels that are on the hilltop and Alton County to get to downtown, it's all of those things. And so those types of services aren't able to keep up with the innkeeper's tax collection. And even though we've seen a lot of great innkeeper's tax collection over the last three years since COVID, unfortunately, there's a lot more need to be able to provide that product and do the marketing that we need to do. The innkeeper's tax has not been raised since the early 90s, as I would call. And it's been at 5% ever since. And so what we've got in front of you, we've taken before hoteliers in conjunction with the Board of Tourism and a committee of people that have been working on that have taken to hoteliers, got really good support among hoteliers. I had support from city council. I think you have a resolution the city council passed to support that is that increase as well. And so the hope is that you take that into consideration and take the steps to that in this direction. Trevor, sorry, I just got it said.
You covered everything.
This is not unique. You want to maybe share the quick up for the increase even just to let everyone knows that we're seeing this increase in other communities as well.
Well, yeah, because what we're seeing is across the state, you've got a lot of different taxes that people are getting pinched by. And so you're seeing more local taxes. So the state's not wanting to do a lot statewide. They're trying to reduce income taxes. They're trying to reduce all these different taxes across the state and saying, you know what, localities, if you have a good reason to raise taxes, then you do it on the local level. And so that's, we're seeing innkeepers have them more and more because that burden does not fall by and large on your residents. It falls on the people visiting and the people using the services, using all of the, all the things that we get to call home. But they come in and use it for a weekend or a week. And so they, they are paying for a portion of that. And the great thing about that innkeeper's tax being paid by the people that come in from outside is that then it helps build up our infrastructure. It adds amenities that we get to enjoy 365 days a year here in Jefferson County. And it's supported by the people who come to visit. So we're seeing this across the state. You know, there's a number of them that have raised it to 8%. There's someone that have gone nine. You know, Indianapolis, if you go stay at a hotel in Indianapolis, between the convention center and their innkeeper stacks and all those other, I mean, you're paying 15, 16%. So this is an increase from five to eight. And so on a, let's just say on a $200 a night room, then you're going to pay an extra $6. Or not you, but the guest. And so that's, that's something we talked about that it's, it's a thing that most people, when you go check out at a hotel, you go, you know what, I need to sign this. I need to get on. I've had a great trip. And we're going to, we're going to go move on. And that's their way of supporting the community that they come to visit.
And one of the things, you know, logistically, that I'm at that phase in my life where we're doing travel baseball. We have young kids and I'm checking out Sunday morning and I get that final bill and I give them my card. I honestly don't care if it's three or $4 more. I'm trying to get out of there because our kids are hungry and they're wanting to go. Let's load up and let's get out. And that, and that's rinse and repeat, you know, quite a bit throughout the summer. So that was one of the examples that hits home with me when you really take a look at it.
But the great thing, like I said, it's, we're able to invest that money then into other amenities and then also additional marketing to bring even more people here who will then continue. That's the whole goal of the innkeeper's tax collection, being, being separate from a lot of these other types of taxing entities, is that you reinvest it in more marketing for your community. And then you market more, more people come, and it just keeps that cycle going. So that's, that's, it got endorsement from the state legislature. That was the first step in getting them, they had to enable that legislation to say, yes, Jefferson County could raise it. And now it comes to the county council to say, yes or no, we, we want to hopefully increase that to 8%. So.
And again, obviously for listeners, this is not a tax that our local residents for the most part are paying, unless you're maybe buying a lovely gift certificate to an Airbnb or a night at a hotel for an outside guest to come stay, but benefiting with those increased dollars, hopefully for added parking. You know, some of these projects that have, have been given as examples. The other reason we'd like to go ahead and begin the first reading of the ordinance tonight is so that there's ample time. It's our understanding, all of the lodging establishments, particularly hotels, have a few months of paperwork to get a lot of things changed, particularly with third-party booking agencies, like you might use cheap tickets or somewhere to get a room. So if this body is in approval for this and would like to read this ordinance tonight, then we want to be able to follow through our appropriate steps on our second reading. We can choose potentially to forego that third reading. So this will have the final stamp of approval and that lodging establishments can move forward with their paperwork. Anyone on the council have any questions specifically for Mr. Forster or Mr.?
My motion to move.
We need to go ahead and read the ordinance. We have a motion from Pam. And we'll kind of take a second from Gary as well. Prior to that vote, let's go ahead and read through the ordinance. And then we'll go and take, take a vote. Completely up to you. Do you need, want me to read it or would you want to be like to read the ordinance?
You can go, you can go right ahead.
All right, this is the ordinance, Jefferson County Council approval an increase in innkeeper's tax, whereas in 1981, the State of Indiana Assembly enacted Indiana Code 6-9-15, the statute established the Fund to Support Convention and Tourism Activities in Jefferson County through the levying of an innkeeper's tax. And whereas overtax on overnight occupancy was initially established at a rate of 4% in 1981, was expanded to 5% in 87, whereas the State of Indiana collected these funds for Jefferson County through the Department of Revenue until the county council passed the ordinance 2019-1, opting for local collection of innkeeper's tax by the Jefferson County Treasurer. And whereas Jefferson County Council further clarified the Board of Managers as referenced in Indiana Code 6-9-15 to be the Jefferson County Board of Tourism through passage of ordinance number 2021-2 or 3, whereas the Indiana General Assembly passed Senate Bill 238 in March of 2024, which became Public Law 121, when signed by Governor Eric Holcomb on March 13, 2024, which amends Indiana Code 69-15-6 to enable Jefferson County to impose a review 8% innkeeper's tax until December 31, 2045. And whereas in order to increase this tax, the Jefferson County Council must pass an ordinance adopting the increased amount. And whereas the Jefferson County Council sees the benefit of imposing the increase to support tourism, development, marketing, capital expenditures that will further support and enhance the quality of life for residents and enhance the economic vitality of Jefferson County. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the Jefferson County Council as follows. Number one, the county council hereby increases the Jefferson County Innkeeper's Tax to 8%, as allowed by Indiana Code 69-15, effective January 1 of 2025, and sunsetting December 31 of 2045, unless otherwise changed by the Indiana Code or this council. And then number two states, the Jefferson County Council instructs the Jefferson County Board of Tourism in charge of these funds to set aside half of the increases, which is 1.5% or approximately 18.75 of total collective funds to be set aside for tourism capital expenditures. Examples of such projects include investment in land, building, vehicles, equipment, economic development projects that require a multi-year pledge of support. The Board of Tourism means instruction and control these funds and stop spending for any tourism-related as directed by Indiana Code 69-15.
Good job.
I can use to talk fast. So we have a motion from Pam Crozier and a second by Gary Copeland. Any additional comments, questions, concerns by the council? And as per motion, all those in favor of adopting this ordinance, say aye. Those opposed? All right. This will come before our meeting one more time in August. I have a hunch we'll go ahead and we can see most likely next month to potentially vote to forego that third reading. And then we'll keep you informed. So we have final stamp of approval potentially in one month.
Thank you very much. And just as an aside, I brought our annual report for Visit Madison and for the state of tourism in Jefferson County and wanted to make sure that you have that paper copy. Length in your meeting, I apologize for not being at a last meeting where you're talking about funding. I got called out of town and it was just a big, somebody else was sick, somebody else was not available. And so just wanted to let you know you have all that documentation. If you want to reach out to me, you have any questions about our requests, feel free to give me a call. You've got, I think almost everybody has my cell phone number, so feel free to give me a call and just really appreciate your support and consideration of not just this, but all the things that we've got going on in Madison, Jefferson County.
And all the council has been Google Doc with all the provided information that got turned in by our deadline prior to that recent council and commissioners meeting where we discussed not the profit. I mean, I heard some requests, so we'll take all of that into advisement when we roll into budgeting here.
Okay, so that's a top one. Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. We actually, next on our agenda, Olivia Hoffman is here with our Sheriff's Department. She may be in the hall. Also packed in people. And we have had, hey, and Forster, thank you. Yes, so we're going to hear from the Sheriff's Department regarding ordinance. It's actually 2024-8.
We just made a few changes, I'm sorry, to the ordinance regarding sex offenders. And the law changed a little bit, so that's why it was going to require some changes, which included the $50 charge per calendar year for an annual fee for all sex offenders. We used to have it separate and the 25 was for the work only. Well, now they've said we can do 50 across the board. And that does include a $5 charge for residency changes with phone number changes with certain types of changes. Also included.
Is that each time that they have a change, they'll have to?
Each time they have a change, they have to pay the $5. Because we got a lot of them that bounce around. It's a lot of paperwork and entering it in two different systems. So it's more of an administrative charge that the state allows us to charge. And then the last one was number five on the second page, which says that originally we weren't allowed to seek any type of legal counsel to retrieve fees. We've got some people that are classified as indigent and can't pay the fees and we classify them as so. But we do have people that just neglect to pay their fees and we have quite a few that haven't. So this gives us the legal right to pursue the, those amounts that they're due.
Just going to have you read number five, so I have a feeling if we have to read entire ordinance, we'll, we'll hear. So I push for clarification on those changes. What questions does the council have?
So pursue litigation.
Correct, correct. If they have outstanding balances. And again, there are people that are indigent that can't afford to pay it and we do classify them as indigent. We have several homeless people that we classify as indigent, but there are people that do work that just don't pay their fees. So. Any other questions?
Right, and we have the pleasure of reading this ordinance on my as well. Sorry, 2009, would you like to read?
I think Heather did a great job.
She goes right there. This guy right here.
So am I going to read all of it or just the highlighted? Okay. Ordinance number 2024-8, County Council Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Indiana. Ordinance allowing the Jefferson County Sheriff to charge annual sex or violent offender registration fees and sexual or violent offender address change fees. Whereas Jefferson County, Indiana, acting by and through the county council and board of commissioners for the county of Jefferson, state of Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code 36-2-13-5.6, and at the request of the Jefferson County Sheriff, desires to adopt an ordinance allowing the Jefferson County Sheriff to charge annual sex or violent offender registration fees and address change fees for sex and violent offenders. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 36-2-13-5.6, the annual sex and violent offender registration fee is hereby established as $50 per year for the registration of any sex and violent offenders and $5 for each time a sex or violent offender registers an address and/or employment change with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Now therefore, it is ordained by the county council and board of commissioners of Jefferson County, state of Indiana as follows. One, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office is hereby authorized to charge the sum of $50 per calendar year for the registration of all violent sex or violent offenders living and working in Jefferson County, Indiana, and $5 for each time a sex or violent offender registers an address change and/or employment, education, volunteering, and/or secondary resident changes with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Two, the registration fees are due on calendar year basis. Regardless of when the offender registers initially with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, the registration fee for the first calendar year is $50. For each subsequent year, the registration fee shall be paid between January 1 and December 31 of each subsequent year. A fee is considered delinquent if not paid by December 31 of each subsequent calendar year. Three, Jefferson County, Indiana now establishes a County Sex and Violent Offender Administration Fund in the office of the Jefferson County Auditor and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office shall deposit all funds collected for sex and violent offender registration fees and address change fees into this account. The county auditor shall transfer 10% of any fees collected to the Treasurer of the state of Indiana and deposit in the state Sex and Violent Offender Administration Fund, Indiana Code 11-8-8-21. Four, the Jefferson County Council may appropriate money from the county Sex and Violent Offender Administration Fund to an agency or organization involved in the administration of the Sex and Violent Offender Registry to defray the expense of administering or ensuring compliance with the laws concerning the Indiana Sex and Violent Offender Registry according to Indiana Code 36-2-13-5.62G. Five, any sex and violent offenders who fail to pay their annual fee to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office shall be subject to civil proceedings in a court of competent jurisdiction, including but not limited to Jefferson Superior Court, whereas they can be fined a maximum of $100 plus court, plus court costs and attorney fees for an initial offense and up to $1,000 plus court costs and attorney fees for any subsequent offense.
Any additional questions regarding the ordinance? That is ordinance 2024-8. All right. We have a motion from Ray back to accept the ordinance as.
Second.
Second by Chris Shelton. All of those in favor? Is opposed, same sign? This will also have more additional reading in this. And while you are both here, we did receive, did all council receive the e-document for the first six months of the commissary report that is required to be provided to the council. Any questions for? So or?
No, I reviewed them.
All right. Have any additional information from us? Can sneak out if you want. Sorry, Heather. And actually, this technically already has signature lines. We'll pass that, pass that at the end of that. So next on our agenda, we welcome Amanda Hoffman with Orion, technically Orion Renewables.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Council members, really appreciate you all being here tonight and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you all. My name's Amanda Hoffman. I'm a project developer with Orion Renewables. I have some colleagues here with me that will also speak after me to just kind of, basically, I'm going to introduce some real basics about our property in Jefferson County. And then we'll be talking about some financial benefits of the property. We began out in the area in late 2019, speaking to landowners in Jefferson County and found that there was a lot of interest in signing up their land for solar lease. We have just over 20 landowners involved in our current proposed project in Jefferson County. We have reduced the proposed project size since the last time that some numbers were discussed due to the fact that we looked at the project size and just kind of determined that we wanted to kind of consolidate the project a bit. And so the numbers that we're going to discuss today are a little lower than what you might have previously heard. Currently have a project size of approximately 2,050 fenced acres, all within Saluda Township. And I wanted to go into a little more detail about the different acreage numbers that you might hear. So the project permit boundary is 3,324 acres. But that is inclusive of all property lines that are essentially part of a parcel that's signed under a solar lease. And so the difference is, is that that property line that that permit boundary follows gets reduced significantly due to the fact that we have a lot of features and constraints that we have to take into account when we're developing a project. So for example, if someone that had 100 acres wanted to sign their land up for a solar lease, we would look at that parcel and that permit boundary might follow their parcel lines. However, when you take into account setbacks, both property line setbacks and adjacent residential house setbacks, as well as planning for landscape screening, and then we have to plan around wetlands, drains, forested areas, and other natural features on that property, that that 100 acres gets reduced significantly. So for this proposed project, in every adjacent home near the project will be at a minimum of a football field away from any solar panels, which is at least 300 feet. The Jefferson County ordinance requires 150-foot setback from adjacent residences. So we've doubled that distance in our proposed project. After the residential setbacks and the property line setbacks are accounted for, again, we plan for a landscape screening bumper that sits on the outside of the fenced acreage. And then again, like I said, we plan around wetlands, streams, drains, forested areas. We don't build in any of those areas of property that's signed for solar. So if we start with our 3,324 acres as part of the permit boundary that follows those property lines, we really get reduced to, sorry, we get reduced another 1,300 acres approximately to get down to that 2,050 acres that are actually fenced. And then even within that fenced boundary, it's not as if solar panels take up that whole 2,050 acres. Those solar panels are in there in addition to a lot of access drives that will serve service trucks. There are open areas that are weird shapes that solar trackers don't fit into, as well as inverters are also part of that fenced acreage. So that kind of gives you an idea of some of those acreage numbers that do get discussed because sometimes they can get confused between the two or appears if, you know, somebody's talking about one and another. I just kind of wanted to go through that basic information because it does get confused a lot. And then at this, at this point, we've tried to be a good neighbor with the community. We've introduced ourselves to a wide variety of people and organizations and we plan to continue to do that, just being a good neighbor, being part of the community as a long-term partner in the area. We've donated approximately $40,000 in the last 12 months to a variety of organizations throughout the county. This includes the Boys and Girls Basketball Tunes at South, at Southwestern, Southwestern Schools, Hanover Volunteer Fire, Jefferson County FFA, Southwestern Schools FFA, and Jefferson County 4-H Fair. So we are excited about being a partner here in this community. And with that, I'd like to hand it off to Michael Pressner to talk about additional benefits and financials that the project would bring to the county and the local area.
Lisa May, can I invite you all in?
Please, I may connect with you all in notes. Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Michael Kressner, I'm the Vice President of Health and for Orion Renewables. As Amanda was leading up to one of the main reasons why we're speaking with you all tonight as part of this body is to discuss a little bit more about the financial ramifications for the county if the project proceeds and what that means in terms of the economic benefits for the solar project. Before getting into the details of what I handed out to you all, we view one of the main obvious benefits of a project like this is the property taxes that this project will be providing to Jefferson County. As part of that, we typically in Indiana proceed with a tax abatement request as well as an economic development agreement with the counties that we work in. And I wanted to explain a little bit about why we do this, right? You know, arguably, we can just get its property tax bill, pay it, and then call it a day. The reason why we pursue a tax abatement and EDAs is because essentially we have to compete. This project here in Jefferson County competes with all other generation projects throughout the state of Indiana and the region. It is pretty hard for the course for solar, wind, or other generation projects such as gas plants, coal plants and whatnot to pursue property tax abatements to lessen the burden of obviously property taxes on the projects in the initial years of operations. And what that does is allow the price of power that a project such as this would sell to their customer that takes that power, might be utility, might be a data center, something like that, that allows the reduction of that price of power to the end customer. So it's not to capture additional revenue as a result of tax abatement. It is to lower the price of power so that projects which have to compete in a marketplace with other generation units can be competitive. And you know, it's essentially a thing that other projects are doing it. And so we have to do it essentially to increase the probability that a project like this can proceed and be economically attractive to the end user. We're no different than any other commodity in that way. It's a price-driven game, game for the most part. And in our industry, it's literally pennies that decide the difference of whether or not a project here in Jefferson County gets selected for a power purchase contract or somewhere else in another part of the state or even another state. And so that is our rationale in terms of why we pursue property tax abatements and ultimately economic development agreements. So to get a little bit more into details of what we are considering here in Jefferson County, it is also possible for us to essentially just request a property tax abatement. And we, in most cases in Indiana, what that includes is for the first ten years of operations. So it is not an indefinite tax abatement request. There is some reduction in the property taxes that a project would obtain. A lot of projects just do that. However, we think that these projects as part of Orion's kind of philosophy in terms of how we develop and work with communities is maximizing the benefits for the community at large. And so our philosophy is generally to share with the county the savings from the property tax abatement. So we try to essentially even out the savings that the project would reap as part of the property tax benefit as well as providing that benefit back to the community. It's a balancing point in terms of how much give and take there is. But at the end of the day, we believe this is a business deal and that the business deal has to make sense, obviously, for the project proceed, but also for the community that it's in. And it's our goal to provide as much benefit to the community at large. And again, going back to what I said earlier, one way we do that concretely is providing a large amount of property tax revenues. So to look at the handout that I just provided to you all and walk through that briefly. The column that is highlighted in blue is essentially looking at what the project as proposed today would provide in property taxes, including the abatement and including our view in what an economic development agreement would look like. So that is the combined total on an annual basis for the first thirty-five years of the project operations, which, why thirty-five years? Generally, that is for a solar project viewed as the operational life of the initial project unless things have to be replaced later down the line with new panels and whatnot. So we tend to look at things from a thirty-five year standpoint when we talk about utility scale solar projects. Now, again, this is just an initial proposal. It is based off of conversations and negotiation with the county and hearing what local needs are. But our general approach to this would be to request an abatement. And the way we've structured the abatement is essentially pretty standard for a solar project in Indiana, which is over a ten-year period. In year one, we would request a hundred percent abatement. And then that abatement goes from a hundred percent down to zero incrementally every year by ten percent. So that that abatement essentially goes away fully after year ten of operation. So year two would be a ninety percent abatement, year three eighty percent, year four seventy percent, and so on and so on. In addition to that, what we are proposing is to provide back those full savings from the abatement to the county in the form of an economic development agreement, fifty percent of the value of the abatement. So what that means and what you see here is that, let's say, the abatement totaled a hundred dollars in total, we would provide back fifty dollars to the county and the project would retain fifty percent of that value of the abatement. Hopefully that makes sense. And so the way the EDA payments, the Economic Development Agreement payments, that savings that we would be giving back to the county work is kind of dependent. We typically structure these, when we've done this in other parts of Indiana in the past, where it's a set annual amount over that ten-year period. But that can shift depending on, again, specific needs of a county and what they would like to see in terms of revenue. But what this projection includes is assuming, again, that hundred ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty abatement along with just a annual set amount in economic development agreement payments back to the county. Now, what that means in terms of real dollars is that based off of the levies that are currently in the county is how we projected this. So we pay the same levies as any other taxpayer here in Jefferson County would on their property taxes. This would change if new levies are added, levies go away. So this is just a snapshot of what it's like today in terms of property taxes in Jefferson County. And this is assuming a four hundred and seventy-two megawatt size project that is installed, which is the project that Amanda was referencing in terms of the acreage amount set, is what we are proposing forward with here. I should also say we are not including battery storage. We're not pursuing that at the moment in Jefferson County. This is just what we're proposing in terms of four hundred and seventy-two megawatt size solar projects. And so all this would change if that size went up or if it went down as well. So just to preface that. But assuming that the project goes as proposed and generally the contours of a abatement and economic development agreement are granted over that thirty-five-year life of the projects, the project would pay two hundred and one million dollars to Jefferson County in property taxes. And again, that is inclusive of the economic development agreement payments, that fifty-fifty share. That fifty-fifty share amounts to fifteen point seven million dollars in that first ten years. And then again, we're proposing to pay that fifteen point seven million dollars to the county equally over the first ten years of operation. And what that means in terms of all the other levies you have here in terms of our understanding and breakdown of what that means. So, you know, here in Jefferson County, a large portion of property tax dollars goes directly to the school district. And that in total, over thirty-five years, would be about a hundred and two million dollars in property taxes going to the local school district. In terms of fire EMS, three million dollars would be going to that. Again, this is all in Saluda Township, which would be, you know, roughly about twelve to fifteen million dollars of that in property taxes going just to Saluda Township. And then, you know, obviously, we can talk about the individual levies and what that means over thirty-five years. But this would essentially be the banner statement of what this project would provide if an abatement was granted and if the EDA was structured as we have proposed it. Again, over thirty-five years, that would be over two hundred million dollars in property taxes that the project would pay to Jefferson County. And so that is the kind of general structure and impact from a property tax basis for this project. You know, we don't get taxed any differently. The only thing that a generation project is allowed to really take advantage of from a property tax level, again, is this abatement. But we are looking to provide as much value as possible to the county while also trying to make this project economically feasible and competitive with our brethren, our competition of other generation projects, both existing and proposed in the state of Indiana and the neighboring states. Again, we, we feed into a multi-state system, that's the way the grid is set up here. And so we have to compete with projects in Kentucky and Illinois, Ohio, that all have different property tax regimes. One thing in terms of an EDA that's probably worth pointing out just for the general public, and I'm sure you all know this because you're far better of an expert than I am in this subject, is why that's beneficial to a county. So, you know, if we just pay a dollar property tax, that has to go to the way the levies are, are set out in this county. No other option, right? What an economic development agreement allows the county to do is to free that money from the levies that each property tax dollar that we pay is allotted. And essentially, the county can decide how to use those dollars separate from the way property tax dollars are utilized in the county. So it frees that money in this case, we're talking again, about fifteen million dollars, sixteen million dollars over ten years to be utilized the way that the county sees fit. And so that tends to be the major incentive as to why counties proceed with an agreement such as this. In terms of next steps, not to be presumptuous, but if things do proceed, the way that we have worked with counties in the past here in Indiana is that typically counties will hire independent tax consultants to issue study to make sure that what we have here is actually right and correct. So there would be the county's representative in terms of understanding the actual property tax impacts as well as the abatement and economic development agreement impacts. There's a firm in Indiana that typically, as far as our exposure to these things, a lot of counties use. And that's Baker Tilly, based out of Indianapolis. Also, counties often hire outside counsel to negotiate this with the project, which would be us. They tend to go with outside counsel that have done these types of agreements before. And there's another pretty common law firm that represents counties often these negotiations throughout the state of Indiana, which we're happy to share if needed. And basically, from that, then there's a negotiation with the council. Often councils pose a subcommittee of members to do the actual nitty-gritty of understanding the details and hammering up the language of a negotiation because this would also include an economic development agreement that would pull the county commissioners in, obviously use the council, have purview over offering an abatement, what that structure is like, and then the county council, I'm sorry, county commissioners would have to approve an economic development agreement. We view those as kind of a package deal. But obviously, we follow the lead of the county in terms of how to proceed with that, if that is of interest. But wanted just to outline generally how these things are done in Indiana. We worked in Indiana for about twenty-five years. So we've done these in various parts for both wind and solar projects. And so this is coming from our kind of history and background in terms of what other communities have told us through negotiations, how they structure things and want things. And this is something that we think is of a mutual beneficial impact both for the projects, again, to reap some savings, to make our price of power that much more competitive and keep up with, with the competition here and in the region as well as provide quite a bit of benefit back to the county as well. So that hopefully wasn't too quick. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have, of course.
Could you provide us a list of counties that you have worked with in Indiana?
Absolutely, yes. I don't know them off the top of my head, so that would be a follow-up item, but yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Additional questions from the council?
You mentioned access roads to the solar panels, how many miles and who maintains that?
Yeah, so I don't know off the top of my head how many miles. A lot of that information is a part of the zoning application that will go through a separate zoning process. So those details, if I don't, if we don't have them today, is going to be publicly available in that permitting process and discussed. But in terms of generally, any project facility, this includes landscape buffering, access roads, even roads during construction the project has to pay for. And the project need from maintaining those as well. Not the county roads, obviously, that you just repair and pay for. If there's any damage or improvements necessary to your construction, but projects, access roads from the public road into the facility would be maintained by the project.
And then, does, do you have to get any permits or are the properties are in lowland areas? Do you have to get any special permits from DNR or Soil and Conservation?
Yeah, so generally, for any project that is a solar and utility scale project in Indiana, there are several permits you have to get. One is obviously, assuming there's a zoning regulation, which there is here in Jefferson County for a solar project, have to get a zoning permit. We also do have to go usually get a stormwater plan and permit from IDNR as well. So drainage, stormwater runoff and all that usually is just done through IDNR at the state level as well. And those tend to be outside the building permit, kind of the main permits that a project like this has to pursue at a local and state level.
And maintenance of grass control, is that done by mowing or is that done by chemicals?
That's a good question, and we'll have a lot more details in terms of, of the permitting package. But essentially, what we're doing here, which might look different from other projects that have been installed in Indiana the last couple of years, is a pretty extensive ground cover plan. The idea is that you're not just replacing it with grass, it's a locally appropriate, if not native, grass mixture that does a couple of things. One, it's natural weed control, so we don't have to do a lot of treatments. So it reduces the amount of herbicides that have to be put out there. It also maintains height-wise, so you might have to mow it maybe once or twice a year just to keep that ground cover from interfering with the panels, creating shading, and then reducing the efficiency of the project. But we're very careful about the type of education that we replant after construction within the project area. And then it has just entry benefits in terms of being pollinator-attractive and friendly, gives back to soil health, water retention, all that good stuff. And there is going to be a landscaping plan as part of the permit package that will have to go through Jefferson County that goes into great detail about everything that that includes. And that includes maintenance as well.
And concrete, how much, how many yards of concrete would you use?
The only concrete that's really going to be involved is going to be at the project operations and maintenance building and the project substation, both are just one in the entire project. So the solar arrays essentially don't include concrete. There are pile driven posts that go in without the, the need of concrete.
I have a question, at the end of the thirty-five-year lease period, does the current property owner have a buyback period or, or what happens at the end of the thirty-five years?
Yeah, so our leases run to fifty, fifty-five years. Yeah, so there are two ten-year extensions after the, for the initial thirty-five years, which is the project's right to extend. If it doesn't get extended, or it goes out after those two ten-year extensions, essentially the project has to be removed from the landowner's ground. Or everything has to be renegotiated to continue the project after that period. And that would include getting a new permit and whatnot, the county as well.
So the current landowner, there's a plan and process of that current landowner. It goes through family inheritance, that type of thing.
Yeah, essentially, solar leases are similar to any other easement across a property, utility easement, cable easement, road easement, so it flows with title. So if there's a project at a land sale, that lease gets attached to the new owner.
Okay, and then my follow-up question. Okay, and then my follow-up question to that is there is a a natural disaster plan for if there were storm damage, hail damage, tornado cleanup process in place for those?
Yes, there is. Again, a lot of that information specifics is going to be provided through the permitting process. But I guess the really kind of quick statement on all of that is, is you know, this is an electric generating facility, or it's an essential facility. So our contracts with the end user guarantee us providing a certain amount of electricity every single day for a twenty, twenty-five-plus year period. So we have to generate or else there are major problems. And so if there is anything done to the project that reduces the capacity or the efficiency of the project that isn't planned for, there is a fast remedy and incentive for the project to get out there and and get generating again. And whether it be from storm damage or parts failure or anything like that, it's all kind of treated the same, not that one isn't necessarily more urgent than than the other. But it's a very serious problem. These things don't get built on spec, right? So we have very strong contractual obligations, both economic and just logistical, again, because we're providing a significant amount of power to the grid itself that utilities, communities are relying on, and so that has to be fixed. Damage will probably occur at some point, but there is a plan in place and timelines that are necessary in order to get that facility generating again.
In those current three thousand three hundred and twenty-five acres, is that currently being used for farmland?
Yes, the majority of the land is either CRP, pasture, or active agricultural land, I guess.
I have a question on employment, how many employees would you have?
Yeah, good question. So during construction, a project the size would probably have several hundred involved in in the project itself. One of the unique aspects of a solar project is that it requires relatively few jobs to actually maintain the project. So there will be an operations and maintenance facility within the project area. If it's four hundred and seventy-two megawatts, I'd say probably on magnitude of five to seven full-time employees that are there, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year that are are based here in Jefferson County. So, you know, upside is that does create jobs. The downside is not a lot of jobs as if this was a manufacturing facility or whatnot. But the silver lining to that is that of that two hundred million dollars in property taxes, you know, our five to seven employees are not bringing in hundreds of new residents, which, you know, may be good or bad, depending on how people view that. But it's not taxing emergency services, the school districts, the roads, sewer system, all of that stuff. So our dollar-for-dollar impact is much higher than other facilities that, you know, provide two hundred million dollars with the property tax revenues. But again, go back to your, the question you actually answered me, it would be about five to seven full-time employees. There are ancillary employees that come in throughout, you know, for various subcontracting and stuff. So in terms of direct and indirect investment dollars, there's obviously very specific direct investment, both the capital cost of the project, construction operations, jobs as well. But there are ancillary indirect jobs that do result as a as a project like this being in the community as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the council?
I have a couple of questions. As far as runoff, have there been any studies that indicate cadmium and other harmful things put back into the water table that people have to drink the water? Contaminating, possibly contaminating the water supply long-term, we're talking about runoff year after year. Also, the noise pollution, that's been a concern. So those are two things that we're going to have to dig down into. And I know we've got three hundred feet back, but will that be enough, especially for one of those inverter stations? They get pretty loud, right?
The inverters themselves, yeah. So, yeah, I just go back to, you know, there is a zoning and permitting process that we did very deeply and fully expect to get into the minutia of those concerns. So, you know, in terms of this body and discussing with projects, you know, very high-level responses to those concerns, which are good concerns to have and and we should respond to. On ground level, water pollution, no, there has not been a study out there that has proven any groundwater pollution as a result of runoff from a solar project. There are instances in the south in some projects during construction of runoff issues that were not contamination issues in terms of hazardous materials. They were poorly constructed and designed from a storm runoff perspective. There's one project in Canada that has shown groundwater concerns, and that was a result not of the solar panels themselves, but the geology of that specific site and the construction method of groundwater interacting with surface water, which caused problems for that. But in terms of the issue of hazardous materials from solar panels and runoff from that, that does not exist, and it's for the reason that these are inert materials, they're hard materials. So, yeah, people talk about cadmium, which is one subset of solar panels that get put out there. That's one technology. There's also polysilicon that's out there that doesn't contain cadmium. But essentially, you're talking about glass, aluminum, copper, and the solar cell material itself. Those are solid inert materials, there's no liquid, there's no gas that's involved in solar panels themselves. So the only way for materials to get exposed in the environment is for a panel to essentially disintegrate, sit there for years on end for that then to leach into the ground if that happens. And then maybe, maybe there's a physical likelihood of that actually reaching groundwater. But I want to be very clear, it's not like it rains and, you know, toxic chemicals are just flowing out from the solar panels. Even damaged solar panels present a very, 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 very low health impact risk to the overall community. Again, just goes back to the basics that these materials, in terms of what it takes for them to pose a danger to the environment, have to be exposed a very long time for them to have any chemical effect on the surrounding area. And that's why I can make that statement.
So what about the noise pollution?
And the noise pollution, another good question. And inverters, there are two, well, actually, three sources of noise from a solar project. One is the substation where all the power goes to, gets up voltage to meet the voltage of the transmission system. These are substations, no different than the ones you see throughout your neighborhoods and communities with utilities. So that physically makes a sound. The second source of sound, this project will have trackers. And so there's a very, very low sound when it's slowly following the sun and then gets reset into place. But that that usually is not heard. And then it's the inverters, as you mentioned. And the solution to that is quite simple, it's good sighting of those inverters. And so what we'll outline in our zoning application are the location of those inverters. Essentially, it's a matter of distance away from receptors. And if those are located close enough within the project boundaries itself, it's very difficult for that sound to carry beyond the boundaries of the project. But that is is just a physical solution. And I should also mention that they're only making sound when the sun is out, the project is generating. Other than that, there is no sound emitting source. So at night, no sun, it's not emitting any sound whatsoever. It's just when the project is is generating itself. Those inverters aren't kept on twenty-four-seven for anyone. It's just to take the power from the solar panel, change the voltage, invert it from DC power to AC and get it to the substation that I mentioned before.
And did I hear you tell Councilman Black that any damage done to the county's roads in this project that you guys would be responsible to repair?
Yes, so we would enter into a formal road use agreement with the county that would outline the responsibilities, the standards to which we have to go in and reinforce roads if necessary prior to construction, the standards for relieving damage to roads during construction, and the standards and requirements for fixing damaged roads should that happen during construction. All of that the project would pay for, and that would be negotiated.
That'll all be documented.
Yes, that would be in an approved agreement signed with the project and the county.
And I'd also like to say that I think most of us here would agree that we would put up with, usually abatements are given to manufacturing and other facilities that hire a lot of people. We could put up with that two or three hundred new citizens coming in. We know that that's, we know that requires more services, but that doesn't really sweeten the deal for us that you're saying, well, you know, there's not going to be any more taxation of your of your services. We'd rather have that taxation, we'd rather have two or three hundred people employed in it. Because that's typically why we give abatements.
Yep, understandable. And like I said, it's, depends on how you look at it. It's just explaining a picture about our property dollars and the impact. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Is your company monitored by the US Federal Agency of the Department of Energy?
No, no, there is no operating generating facilities are at that level, utilities are regulated by the federal government, usually FERC is the the agency, not the Department of Energy. They, you know, have rules of operation, approved interconnection agreements that generating facilities have to go through. But us as a developer and even as an operator as a company are not.
We don't have any interaction with them.
DOE, no.
I should not know that.
Additional questions from council members? I have, I'd be disappointed myself if I didn't mention, you know, my phone obviously has has blown up last few months regarding this topic. And, you know, the individual sitting at this table, their status as well. And we're the voice for over thirty thousand people in this county. So I'm well aware there's instant pressure tonight that want to see this pushed forward because it involves their land and they're ready to move forward. And I make this project, it's your company. But I'm not going to make any rushed decision. I also want the community to know there are a lot of taxpayers and residents that think that this governing body and or commissioners are making all solar decisions. I have had random people tell me things that I know aren't true just because they're maybe not educated and I'm not the expert on this project, even though I've tried to saturate myself and learn a lot the last couple of months. But there there truly are people that think that we'll vote and or they saw it on the agenda tonight, and they think that we are decision-makers if we're allowing solar panels in this county, and and that's not the case. I am A-OK with being on the record to say, obviously, it may come to a vote potentially to this governing, but even abatement is possibly granted. And there might be a potential county decision regarding cap on solar acreage. And a lot of community members don't realize that, that obviously other counties across this state that have allowed and or not overstepped their boundaries, allowed zoning ordinances and plant commissions to do their thing, and solar panels to, you know, not to take over, but to, you know, be a part of the landscape. A county governing body then stepped in to say, okay, but at a certain cap, we're we're not going to exceed a certain percentage of, you know, agriculture acres so that this entire beautiful county is covered in solar panels. If that were the case eventually in the future sometime, obviously, the commissioners, you know, would would have a voice in that in regards to when it's moving forward potentially with a cap. But I guess I just, I want it to be known, I know dozens of folks have asked me that if we're the decision-makers on it, we're going to allow you to have, you know, other companies? Because that's the only thing that I think most people don't realize, you're not the only entity that has come and stepped foot seeking permission, wanting to have a talk at the table already, as you said, started in twenty nineteen, talking to landowners. So this has been going on for a while. So I guess I just want it to be known that we're not really making a vote. If if we're for or against solar, we have to make the best decision if even abatement is potentially granted, and that's why you're here. And I think the other thing I'd like, I'd like to state is you very point well taken when a couple of the questions here were asked, and you said, really, that that's not necessarily you guys, that that's part of the plant commission? Oh, that would be a piece of, you know, planning and zoning as far as what landscape and fencing would look like. Separate entities and and ordinances and and signed agreements for road coverage as well. I just know that if we're not asking those questions now, even though I may not have a vote, that plank of the table, I I still have to soak in every piece of this project. Absolutely, and this community has not really had a chance to have a voice. And we've been told by multiple companies that public forums will take place, and if we're much bigger than this, whether that be a high school gym or somewhere, and and I think the public is anxious to ask some questions. But to to move forward quickly with a decision from this governing body before the public's had a chance to ask those questions, before, you know, information like you shared with us is even given in a much bigger public setting, I I think it's important. I would, I would like to see this make rushed decision.
And, you know, our intention today, we appreciate your time that you all have given us because this is part of the outreach process, right? You're not requesting a decision on this today, it's a process. And, you know, we look at this as an opportunity to get information out there. So I I hope it's not taking in the terms of my response to questions you all have asked and I'm not trying to respond to it. It's, this is going to be a large public process as part of of zoning process. And any interaction that we have with a public body, be it the county council, BZA or or county commissioners, and so we welcome those questions in every venue. This, it's very important for us, for the community to understand the whole picture of a project like this, which is obviously addressing their concerns and weighing the pros and cons. This is, we'd be the first to admit, a development project of any type, be it a solar project, housing development, commercial development, whatever, has pros and cons and impacts to it. And so it's really important for us to be transparent and go with this for the community to understand all the facts and get it out there. And this is exactly what we look at, these opportunities to interact with you as public officials are doing. And so we're not, to be clear, more probably for the public, because I think you all know that we're not requesting an approval for anything here to do. Just to provide a snapshot of one of the aspects of this project, which is the economic benefits. And at some point, we would like to proceed in terms of understanding what the contours of an abatement and EDA would look like. And that's that's a longer conversation, and that's something you all need to decide whether or not it's in the county's interest to do. And, you know, to to re- and say what you were saying is that, you know, this has multiple points of approvals. The BZA has to approve our zoning application for the project to happen. Your all responsibility is is for just purely the tax abatement should one be allocated to the project in our group. County commissioners would have to weigh in both on the zoning application as well as approve an economic development agreement should they choose to do it. So there are multiple public bodies involved in the act. I think you guys are probably happy not being the zoning body that has to to take this all up. And we, of course, are doing quite a bit in terms of public outreach because it is very important for us for people to voice their concerns, see how we can respond to them, mitigate them, and and be transparent about what this project includes. The last thing that works towards nobody's benefit is having bad facts and information out there. And it's part of our job, which again, going back to why we're here today, we appreciate you guys' time in terms of allowing us to talk a little more about it and be transparent in that in the public more. So we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Can we get your contact information?
Yes, I will, I will leave you all hard online as well. Yes, thank you.
And before we get to any public comments, if we if we stick with the listed in order of agenda items, we're going to very, very, we're going to have very, very short and transfers and technically next to our agenda. And then we would get to any people comment. So let's go ahead and can you move through those if we could, please? We actually have three additional. Heather, do you want to go ahead, want to go ahead and run through those?
Yeah, so we have one additional for recap development. This is for sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. This is an inherent reimbursement due to security camera damage during a storm. Are, do you want to do that one first?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Yeah, so that's eleven thirty-eight. Okay, motion made, Mr. Black, second by Mr. Copeland. All of those in favor, say hi. There's a posting sign? There's a post sign. I expected that this evening. There are two additionals from the nine one one two, um, ARPA fund, which council should also already be, um, aware of.
Right, so the first additional is for the remaining of the security camera update for the courthouse. Um, the other additional is attendance on demand, which is a program that several of us have viewed and I will be getting in contact together for commissioners if the funding is approved, of course. Um, this would be a timekeeping system for county employees that I think is well beyond needed at this time for ten families. And, um, that cost is sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's actually the installation fee and one year of service contract.
So they have, we did process, uh, and this was shared with council already, um, and those quotes are forty-seven five. And then the annualized fee, obviously that includes that first year. And we are blessed that we can potentially use, um, this, this can be, um, expense to our ERP remaining funding. Um, you know, we've discussed lengths of benefit of, of that system.
A motion to approve that.
Okay, so, um.
Second.
All right, a motion by Pam Crozier, second by Ray Danning, uh, for both of the forty-three thousand fifty, the security updates for the camera, which actually that court is below the original lowest bid, which is great. The second out of the nine one one two fund is a total of sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. So motion by, um, Pam, second by Ray Danning. All of those in favor of approvals, Scott? There's a post sign. Okay.
Okay, and then just as a formality, um, I also presented, or I have an additional resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight in the amount of one hundred and six thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents, which is the three additionals altogether.
So what was just discussed, not anything else in addition, um, we're just making the paperwork a little easier. Additional resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero. Total amount stated, if we could go ahead and get a motion for that total, for the one hundred and six thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, Chris.
I need to revise that. I should read, uh, it's not two cents, it's zero, it's zero cents.
I know where that came from because, um, the security update total on the attached quote, quote is forty-three thousand fifty dollars and two cents. Thank you, Chris. That two cents was not on the quote sheet where this was summarized. So we'll, um, let's get the two cents added back in, um, so that final amount would be correct of the one oh six five twenty-five and two cents. Thank you, Chris. Carrie, did I see a hand go up?
Yes, I'll still make that one.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Copeland, the second for that total resolution out, second by Dwayne, all those in favor. All right, I suppose, correct.
I think the original is one of the best.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to send this around, I'm going to start this with, and this does not have the two cents. Um, can I, can I, yes, I should be able to do that. And we'll get that correct in our, um, written records.
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and raise for this, at this round. Um, so let's go ahead and open up, um, the mic. Obviously, there's no mic, so speak loud, you are being recorded. But, uh, we'd, we'd love for anyone that would like to share from a public setting. Um, we're going to try and limit those to right about three minutes. If you want to come to the podium, please tell us your name and address. And then, um, we'll give, give you about three minutes to ask questions, to make comments. Anyone from the floor?
I'm Warren Arthur, I reside thirty-six eleven, West Ohio Review Handover. And a couple of points I'd want to hit upon, uh, it's correct, the financial aspect of tax abatement is the main thing that's going to be coming before this committee. The other will primarily go before the BZA unless there's some zoning changes, the commissioners would not be involved or the plant commission would not directly. It would primarily be the BZA. So there'll be a huge opportunity for public and so forth to be able to address that side of issues on solar. A lot of the questions that I was hearing today. I would advise probably the most straightforward issue that I heard today, I wanted to pass on the council. Yes, this is a business transaction. Orion Solar comes to our community, not because they want to benefit our community, not because they have a feed like in Jefferson County. They come here to make a dollar business-wise. There's nothing wrong with that. Many other businesses do. And it's a very positive thing for our community. But as a council, you need to be certain that you take the opportunity and you bring the expertise you need in to evaluate tax assessments, abatements, so forth, to be sure where it stands. Orion has those experts at their disposal. Well, they've had months, if not years, to work on this. And so the council needs to be certain that they allow themselves adequate time and enough resources that they can address this. You know, as far as the, uh, uh, forty thousand dollars been donated, that's not done out of donations. That's done to buy as an incentive. It is to buy support for the project. One of the main things that, that concerns me, regardless of whether you give a tax abatement or don't give a tax abatement, is the reason they do economic development agreements is that's also a way to buy the council and buy the commissioners. It's an incentive. It's saying, here's a million, five hundred thousand dollars a year that you can spend any way you want to spend it because you get to write the economic development agreement. That can be a positive thing. It may be a negative thing. Personally, even if you give the abatements, I would rather see, instead of you getting your payment in an economic development sentence, I'd rather you see you give a lower abatement. Because that does more to hold everyone's property tax rates lower. And you need to, it's especially the public, the council may have a good feel for this, but we hear two hundred and one million dollars in property taxes. Well, that's correct. The dollars are spent, they're laid out and it falls in place. It'll be two hundred and one million dollars. That doesn't mean that you're getting a new or an additional two hundred and one million dollars. That levy, other than the economic development incentive, goes into what your current property tax base is. Then they establish a rate which is lower. So it isn't that you're going to get two hundred and one million dollars more over the course of thirty-five years because of this. There would be other taxes that would go down. They're very complicated. I'm not the person to be able to explain that and cover those bases. But personally, instead of you getting a million five to go into a slush fund to spend however you happen to feel or whoever stands up that year that wants a piece of it, I've watched many other commissioner meetings, council meetings. You know, if there's money there and it's not designated, everybody wants a piece and they come up with a project. I would rather you see you leave that money in the hands of the taxpayers to where they paid you less money that year and they spend it in our county where they feel best, one way or the other. Because we have had high, we have high property tax rates compared to others. For the abatements, they already have some advantages coming to Southern Indiana. Uh, the land is, has a value that's put on it. And we get the increased value of that tax regardless of the abatement. If I understand correctly, the increase in the land values isn't covered by the abatement side of it. If this project was going in Northern Indiana, the land with, for the solar actual installations would be valued twelve, thirteen thousand dollars an acre. The tax would be calculated on twelve, thirteen thousand dollar acres. Since agricultural land and so forth are divided into three categories in Indiana, in the southern part of the state, we have lower production. They also have lowered the value for the solar side of it. So in Southern Indiana, it's roughly five thousand some dollars an acre. So they have some advantages just by being in the southern part of the state without any abatements. And when I look at the opposition that is here statewide in many counties, Clark County turned one down recently. Up in Northern Indiana, there's been numerous lawsuits that have stretched out for quite some time. It's very possible and highly likely this project would still go forward without the abatement.
Go ahead and, um, any, we're, we're five minutes. I, it's my job.
All right, thank you.
Try and keep us, we appreciate your remarks, um, and even, well, I always said, even in five minutes, um, well done. Um, any, anybody else who would, um, just give us your name and address.
I'm John Hutchinson. I live at one twenty-two West Hutchinson Lane. Among other things, I've been superintendent at Southwestern Schools. Now, there was a nuclear fire plant that started in the Southwestern School Corporation. Uh, that took our assessed valuation from thirty million to over five hundred million. Uh, and as soon as it was Public Service Indiana pulled the plug on that, it went down just as fast. And the school corporation had made some agreements that they were going to build buildings and other things. They still had those buildings to pay for without the, the extra financial resources. Uh, the other thing that I want, the solar industry has a proclivity to enter an agreement. You want to make sure that agreement is binding on the next person who owns that, that operation. So you want to be careful about those things. Thank you.
I, I have three questions. I don't think I want to cough me, sorry. Um, the first of all, my name is Cindy Golding and, um, we live at twenty-six ninety-eight North Blackford. And my first question is, we were wondering if you could explain how this works as far as, like a farmer would pay ten thousand dollars a year in taxes with the abatement, how does that, how does the county get their share of their money? How do you get it? I mean, don't talk about how, how does the county get their money from the abatement?
Could you go ahead? So I probably should have mentioned this early on, um, there, the project itself, all the solar facilities are taxed separately from the landowner's land that they have. So whatever the property value is, the landowner is completely separate in terms of the assessed value of the project. So we get a separate tax bill and that assessed value is done at the state level. It's not based county by county. Um, and that's how our bill works out. The landowner has their own separate property tax, um, the bill that they will continue to have to pay. But the abatement does not touch. It would only affect the property tax that the project owns, separate from the landowner.
But the value has increased, so their taxes will also increase.
Um, uh, no, uh, so, uh, I'm sure you could get a relatively aggressive assessor that says you're making this revenue that's that much greater. And so your property is therefore greater. Uh, we have not seen that in Indiana. Other states have done it. Um, so there's arguments to be made. The landowner gets an opportunity to say why that's not true and go through the repeal process for that. But it, it's at the discretion of the, um, the assessor, essentially.
And there's a, sorry, but it has well answered. So there's two, two areas where the solar or where the, the tax, the county will receive tax revenues. One is on the solar, on the utility distributable property. That's akin to essentially a tax on the equipment that's brought in to the county. The second, you know, I think which we're all familiar with are underlying property taxes, right, and the local taxes. So there's a specific mill levy rate that the state has published for county auditors. And I would encourage you all to talk to the auditor because he or she will know the answers to these. But there's a specific solar tax rate, property tax rate that the county would assess. And they look to the state for guidance for what that rate actually is. It used to be county by county, kind of what you were thinking. Each county had their own discretion on how they could tax, um, you know, the, the land values, but there's a, kind of state guidance for how to do that.
Appreciate you too.
And I don't want to put on this, but our assessor is here, or went in the hallway, she may even have to sleep out.
Um, I spoke with the county assessor. So currently our aggregate is around two thousand dollars per acre. I do not know the exact amount. Um, once it becomes solar, it will go to at least fifty-two hundred per acre. And then there will be county discretion that could go even higher.
Okay.
So, and uh, state actually put out a memo on this that the assessor had.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that everybody's input on that. My second question is, we know that the energy is going to be collected only about twenty-two percent of each panel and it's actually going to be harnessed. Where's, how are you getting the energy from the, where it's located, that one and a half miles between State Road seven and over to Chicken on the Road? How are you getting the energy to?
It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think it's okay.
I think that's a clear example of, of confusion. Um, this really is a massive, um, topic. So I think that's a great example that, um, it is hard to understand everything when we see in, maybe in the media the deputy pipe location, for example, that recently was, uh, uh, made public at the plant commission. I think so many folks don't realize that this may indeed be a different company, a different set of landowners, a different proposed set of total acreage. Yeah, it, it is, it is confusing. But I do think, um, many residents are curious. They just assume power generated is staying here. I literally had somebody this past weekend say, will my light bill go down when my, my home is now going to be powered by solar in Jefferson County? Um, and I think that's also, um, important for the public to know.
But to answer your question, it's a power line.
Uh-huh, okay, power line. It'll be aerial in most places? I mean, is that what you guys usually do, do aerial or do, do ground cables?
I can, I can talk to that a little bit. So just so you all know, the project that we're talking about were located in the southern half, the southern part of the insulated township only. Yeah, kind of close, like around the, kind of Marble Hill area. Uh, and so the way that the project is designed, um, all the panels are connected to one another electrically. And, uh, the power feeds into inverters and then between the inverters, there's one, you know, there's a project substation. So all that power feeds primarily underground through underground cabling to a substation where the power then is, the voltage is lifted to match the grid, to match the electricity lines. And then there will be a line overhead that either goes to an existing substation or to an existing power line that runs, that runs through there.
Inter distance that you have to maintain between a battery station and also where you have the panels?
But just to be clear, we're not, we're not, we're not proposing any batteries with this, with this, this is just solar panels only.
Well, before my final answer, I'm going to ask you a question. Okay, it was already brought up, but I think it's really important because we understand after reading quite a bit and hearing from other people that it's often resold as soon as it's finished. Do you guys anticipate really staying true and staying where you're going or are you thinking even about, is this an investment that you move on because somebody else? That's something that you've.
So yeah, just to, to, yeah, to, to, to talk a little bit about, about that, I, I'd say it can go a multitude of ways. And so, yes, there are projects where we, that we own and operate. We have one in Indiana, a wind farm that we own and operate to the state. And utilities may also want to own the project as well and include it as part of their rate base. And so that is definitely a possibility as well. Um, oftentimes companies will get projects up and running and, you know, they may sell the project. But I think it's good to understand that there are contractual obligations in place, not only with the landowners, with the county, and also the, the utility who buys the power, the energy from it. So even though, let's say like, uh, you know, owning a home mortgage, you know, you may find out one day that it's owned by a different company. I mean, oftentimes the basis stays the same, whichever the maintenance crews, um, the mower maintenance crews and, and all of that. So yes, the project may ultimately be owned by another owner. We don't, we don't know that. But I just wanted to, yeah, be open with everybody that that is certainly a possibility. But we enter into long-term power purchase agreements, being that there will be an obligation to sell the electricity utility. That's the obligation to, to buy it for. That's the obligation to, to buy it for twenty to thirty-year time periods.
So whatever is in the contract, then it will be honored by the
That's absolutely right. And same for the landowners who have that same concern. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Golding. I know we went a little over time, but obviously a good portion of that time was response. Anyone else?
Yeah. All right. My name's Corey Thomas. How is that, how you doing? Uh, I am the Saluda Township trustee. Uh, so I'm gonna talk to you from a, a plethora of, of agencies today. I'm also a trustee at the town of Han, or at the Hanover Township Fire, uh, Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated.
We are sure it's public records and you are indeed a trustee, but we go in and
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes. Three nine nine eight West Saluda Hill Road, Hanover, Indiana.
We'll come to your house.
Absolutely. Uh, I will say this out of, uh, and, and I, I would challenge any landowner uh, to tell me that I'm not gonna be more affected than anybody else because my personal property is a half mile back off of the road. I don't even own the road frontage and there will be panels all the way up to the edge of my driveway. So I challenge anybody to, to, to beat me on that, first off. Second off, I want everybody to understand that, uh, from a fire department standpoint in this area, we are operating off of tax bases that was created in the nineteen seventy, okay? So I am tasked with saving folks' lives on a lot of times a budget that most people in here make more than we have as a budget in the fire service, okay? Uh, these folks have been nice enough to, to make a donation to us thus far. Uh, they, we are upgrading our rope rescue equipment. Um, I'm sure most people know that we have Clifton Falls State Park in our county and it is a little known, but it is actually uh, we as a, as a very small community actually get to participate in some really, really cool rope rescues uh, to the extent that a lot of places would beg to have the opportunities that we get over there in the park. So, uh, this is gonna be greatly appreciated, uh, for us in upgrading the safety equipment that we get to operate. Now, uh, coming to you from the Saluda Township Advisory Board, uh, I have, obviously they've, you know, been made aware of everything that's going on. Obviously, they're, 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 um, uh, made aware of some of the numbers that we've all talked about and heard from tonight. Uh, as the advisory board, when it comes to the Economic Development Payment Plan, uh, as the advisory board, we just wanna know, we, we, we want to hey, don't forget about us, obviously, because that, there is a portion of this that, that technically would, would have originally come to us without the Economic Development Plan. Now, on the same, on the other side of that, from the Hanover Fire Department, we also want to make sure that if there's an Economic Development Plan, uh, put in place that, hey, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to upgrade up some bar equipment, probably. There's probably gonna have to be some, uh, some updated equipment, some, some training involved. Uh, and so also, you know, there again, uh, we talk about a lot about our budget and everything. This is a potential massive increase. Uh, and I think that it should be known that, that with this kind of increase in a budget, um, we are going to and we are, Ron and I, the chief is outside, we already have plans in place to, to work on what's called lowering our ISO rating. Or actually, uh, increasing it in a way, uh, providing, uh, lower, uh, insurance, uh, costs for the homeowners. So we intend to, as the fire department, we intend to take, make good use of it and, and turn it around and be able to use it for the benefit of the community. So if there's any question as far as what the fire department would do for it, I, I I implore you to, if you ask me, uh, we'll be fairly open in front with it. And same thing with the advisory board, uh, we've, we've got that same commitment. So, uh, the only question that I, that I did wanna ask and, and we haven't asked this is, uh, if there, you know, let's say this project does go through and then we've talked a lot about number, let's say that there's actually gonna be increases, that is auto automatically. You know, the numbers are, you know, let's say the number's a hundred thousand. Let's say that everything's great and it's even better than a hun, you know, the number's a hundred thousand. If it's the number's a hundred fifty, do we get that automatically without coming back and being like, hey, I know you said a hundred, but you know, your project's way better than, than anticipated. Do we get that, that extra? Does that make?
Yeah, um, so yes, it, it would be scalable with the size of the project, which is how we typically negotiate these types of things. And we see property tax dollars or rocky tax dollars that scale on the assessed values. That's, that's automatic.
We've talked some about going smaller, but I also wanted to think, you know, I'm, hey, I'm hopeful. I like to live in the, uh, in a world of happiness. So what if we had more, right? Abundance. So, all right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I say something really?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so our tax levy is controlled by the state. So we are not going to have, possibly have two million dollars extra every year. It's only gonna lower other people's tax and we will stay at the growth that the state says we can grow. So at no point in time is there additional money other than the payment in lieu of taxes.
I just wanted everyone to know.
My name's Paul Tafflinger. I reside at fifty-four ninety-six South State Route sixty-two, represent also the Chelsea Store. I'm here on multiple reasons. One, you gotta know, I'm looking to put this right in my neck of the woods. As president of firehouse in Hanover, I appreciate your donation and future contributions if this goes through. I also am a union carpenter. And I have seen projects this size. I've seen smaller and I've seen bigger. My biggest concern is, I'd like a list of your places you put these in. I'd like to know what kind of contractors you used. If it's a good contractor, it does good work. And a contractor does bad work. I was on a project. Contractor was doing the electrical grounding. Fortunately, somebody happened to look and catch it as an inspector. Y'all are playing with my electricity. Don't use this as an example. If things ain't done right, anybody that goes out there may not come back. It's our voltage. I worked in powerhouses, hydroelectric dams. I've built schools, hospitals, prisons, you name it, bridges. Everyone over the Ohio River said the Sherman Min. I've been on it. So I have thirty-some years' experience as a union carpenter. I have a college education in construction. I have a vested interest that this is gonna be in my neighborhood. I wanna see it done right. And I'd like a list of your contractors you've used in the past, people you're interested in using again. And I'd like to know where you, places you got this in Indiana. Or why can we look into? I'm not against you. And that's one of those things that everybody, some people are for, some people are not against. Not here and they're for, one way or another. I figure what's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. But I do expect if it does happen, I wanna see it done correctly. Cause you're gonna be in my neighborhood. I don't worry y'all live. Make sure you built the outhouse right.
Any additional questions from our audience?
Anybody out there?
I know as a, as a resident, I'm, come on in. I am going to propose a couple of questions and I'll do my job, um, to, to speak with a couple of people on the Plan Commission. A couple other, um, questions that have come up frequently. People do wanna know how projects like this might impact their property value. And we have heard everything from, um, you know, oh, no more than a one percent drop in your property value if you live, you know, in a side of solar. Um, I had someone from another county tell me they have been quoted as much as twenty-five percent decline in their property value at open size. Um, and again, I know this board is not even deciding if, um, if, um, they can or cannot build, so to speak. Um, but I know I, I, um, am personally, I'm gonna come and chat with the Plan Commission a little bit about some additional research and property value as well as the setback. They mentioned doubling with ordinance states going from one hundred to the proposed, I believe, three hundred. Um, and I believe Clark was on the target for a proposed one thousand setback. Um, not, not three hundred, um, just to move that much farther away from residents. Um, so those are, I know, two questions for me personally that I will, will, um, you know, probably ask a little more research. You learn for those on, on the Plan Commission and a little research when I, um, I think you snuck in from the other room, yes?
Paul Goldie. Uh, my business is at twenty-two forty-one Fifty Drive, Madison Ashley Goldie's Orchard. Uh, I know this is more about the southern part of the county and not Madison Township, but and it's, it's more about abatement, just meaning, but I am concerned about the environmental pollution that this could possibly cause by some act of God, either lightning or hail, wind damage. What type of contamination that could cause to the surrounding farmland, which I own, we own directly across the fence line in some of this proposed, uh, construction. So, uh, you know, if it does come, we do have surface runoff or if we have a fire or something in those soil panel units, I don't know how much lightning affects them or anything. I don't have any data on that, where that could cause a fire catastrophic proportion. Cause I'm bound to wind of that, as part of that soil panel farm in Madison Township. So, uh, in addition that I mentioned at the other meeting at the city council, uh, some of that runoff would run directly through our property and into Clifton Creek. So, which, you know, could go on down into Clifton Falls State Park. So I'm just concerned about the environmental effects could have on the, on the surrounding farmland. And loss, particularly a loss of that much, uh, prime agricultural brands of production that, you know, it's gonna be gone for thirty plus fifty years, so. Man, I don't know about the, I don't know about anything about the, uh, the radiation that it gives off as far as you know, anything that's found above it or walking through it. Because we do need bees for pollination for orchards, so. Uh, there's a lot of things I'm concerned about, but I, I'm sure there'll be time later for those discussions come up, so. That's all I got for seeing you. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate your concern and questions. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, do you want us to address any of those or keep it moving?
What, um, do you have a, hang on one sec. Do you have a follow-up question regarding what you just mentioned? Okay, um, let's go ahead and let him, uh, reply, um, back to Mr. Goldie's concerns. Um, would you like to go ahead and, and address a couple of his concerns?
Sure. Well, I think you addressed property taxes, right? So, uh, part of the permit application process, a very comprehensive property tax analysis uh, has been done and included in that report. And that has pulled from, uh, you know, many examples, you know, across the state, the region. Property value, okay, I'm sorry, property value study. Uh, and that's pulled a lot of data from existing farms and residences in proximity to farms. There's also national reports as well. And I, I know on the surface it seems hard to believe, but the reports that you read all conclude that there are, for agricultural valued land and residents in close proximity, there is no appreciable decrease or increase either way. Especially if you are, if you are including setbacks and screening like we proposed, that that mitigates that risk even further. But, you know, that's information that the BZI will be looking at. That's in a permit application that's publicly available. You all can, can take a look at it. There's also, you know, national studies as well. Uh, in terms of the, the, the fear and the risk around, uh, water contamination, I, I believe that we, we addressed, uh, that. Uh, you know, we're actually talking about pollinator friendly mixes. I mean, right now it's predominantly monocrop agriculture. Either soybeans or pork horn within the project. You know, we're actually
I'm actually on the orchard, so I'm a tiny quarter mile of that.
I can't, I can't speak to that. Really, I can't speak to that project. But what I'm saying for our project is that we are planning on putting pollinator friendly species of grasses and plants to promote wildlife, bee habitat, bird habitat, what you like. Oftentimes, you know, bee boxes can actually be designed within the site as well, uh, for beekeepers.
And then any studies made as far as the, the movement of the bees in that in that zone, though, far as interrupting their, their homing signals and so forth, or, you know, going back to their hens and I mean, that would be my concern too.
So I, I can say that there are current studies on current solar farms in the state of Indiana, just north of Arrow where universities from Chicago are here studying, um, bees and poll, pollination and all of that currently. I'm not sure. I, I, I can't say that right now.
I will say there are a lot of solar projects that you include.
No, both for me, that's, that's a problem. I realize on the map, yeah, in your, on that Saluda Township, it's good.
We can talk about this after, too. And that goes with everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
For that, yes, ma'am. Yeah, just your name and address if you would please.
I'm Christine Horsley and I'm from Clark County. And nice to finally meet you all. We, we know that you won't be in our area since probably nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, somewhere in there with Bright Knight and now there's another solar company in our community. Haven't heard anything from you all. I don't know if it's February the party or the thing or not, but we haven't heard anything from you all. Or I haven't personally at any of the meetings I've been to at our permission meeting. But anyways, um, I just wanted to say that, um, in Clark County, I'm one of the residents that's against it. And I'll tell anybody that. Uh, and, um, we have a lot of concerns. We're concerned about contamination of water. Uh, we're concerned about property values. We're concerned about the noise that comes from this and we know, what that I've heard, I haven't heard any noise yet.
What I've heard.
But I can tell you that if you go out on no, says no, you can listen to their testimonies of what's going on around the country in different places. That's Missouri. Um, we've seen something from Hosee County where they're out there right now pushing the holes in the ground. And, um, one of the wells out there is putting off nothing but brown water. And that's going in their child swimming pool. So they can't use the water because the wells are being contaminated with the drainage issues. When you pound one of those holes into the field tiles, it's going to affect something. Those drain tiles that were put in place to run the water to different places were put in there for a reason. And now they're piling them right straight through that. And I don't know, you know, would you often say differently to tell us differently? Those holes go right straight through that. But for the folks of us, the ones of us that don't want this, are, and again, I'm Clark County, but I'm just here to kinda share with you all what our concerns are. How is it, I know property value or property rights are everybody's right. But when the property rights, things you all are doing with your property, those that want it are infringing on the folks that don't want it because our property values are being affected. And in Kentucky, I think Kentucky, I think it was, there was a tri-state uh, review and it was way more than one to two percent. It was, you know, up there, a hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna lose twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars. You would have to, you know, look further, but there is going to be property value guarantees. Are you all willing to guarantee property value guarantees to these folks that don't want this? That's gonna lose the value of their property because it's not fair to us. And, and even the folks that want this, and, and we have some folks from Clark County here that do want this. But even though they're doing this and they're making money off of it, I mean, it's still gonna affect their property values as well. So to me, where is it fair for one landowner versus another landowner to put something on your property, you know, just like having a nightclub next to a school or a church or something? You know, we can't do those things. And so i- i- in the case of this, when, uh, property values are being affected, and that's what we've all worked for, to build up, you know, equity in our homes and have that for our retirement. I'm just saying that, you know, be careful what's being done. These companies will sell and how many, how many These companies will sell, and how many, how many, you also have the name of the girl's name, but I think I've read something, and I know maybe wrong, if this has happened differently.
Three.
Oh, for yourself, so just be prepared, um they will sell. And uh your next one, say no, they're not honor the agreements you made with them. So just saying, uh we kind of wanted to share what we learned.
Thank you.
Christine, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Horstling, Clark County.
All right.
I'm out of the door. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm from Clark County also, we can't learn our lesson by not speaking, we get really grounded in that.
You all didn't ride together here?
No, no. Max Zimmerman, uh trough in Indiana, six-six-one-six, Somon Mill Road, and she does have some good points. Uh but you know, let's talk about uh property rights and stuff. Okay, I I live in the, I live in the area, there will be solar panels surrounding me. Now, across the street, my neighbor's against it, she came to me and said, hey, are you gonna sell? I said, no, I'm not gonna sell, I'm just, they weren't mad. I said, you know, if you, well, she said, there are some people saying, well, you're not putting them against your house. I said, I'm more happy to to put them against my house. She said, oh, no, 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 don't do that, I don't want them near me. So I did put them near my house, but also picked out places I didn't come around to other neighbors also. But she's talking about like solar, and I'm not trying to be mean here or anything, but there's an issue in Clark County now, there's like a hundred and eighty acre farm in Memphis that they're wanting to put five hundred, some on homes on, where everybody's blowing up about it. We don't want that many people in our area, that's over a thousand cars per day, we have to do schools and everything. What I've really figured out about solar is, I'd rather have solar, because I have no more neighbors I gotta worry about. Yeah. And uh and and don't talk to, you don't have kids I gotta worry about. So uh so I'm I'm gonna live out in it, uh yes, I'm gonna benefit from it, I'm gonna keep the the farm, some of that farm ground been in our family for a hundred plus years. Today, I do not farm myself, because it's a tough life. I farmed when I got out of college. And what it's gonna do is we'll keep that farm in my family for their thirty, thirty-five years, maybe fifty years. And then when my grandkids get ready, that farm grounds will be ready to be farmed again or be developed. So you know, there there's two sides of every story, uh there's benefits and downside. Uh I mean, I farm, you know, like I said, it's not an easy life, that's what, I think a lot of people don't understand, some of this ground been in families for years, that the the, all the ups and downs that we've had for to to have, still having our family today, I still have a lot of attachment to it, and I'm gonna take care of it. And I don't think solar's gonna hurt it, it's actually gonna be better for it, because we're not putting all the chemicals in like as they do today. So that's my two cents of what I feel about solar. So hey, have I became educated in solar? I learned every day about it, because it's, it's, it's hard for you all to make a decision, getting just a little bit of notes here and there. So I mean, I I feel sorry for everybody that sits on that side of the desk, because everybody comes after you on both sides. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it, and good luck, everybody.
Thanks, Max.
You're making it to Madison. You're a quaint little river town, stay, save the weekend, pay that in keeper's tax. Don't work for Madison, but I love my community. Um anybody else?
Ms. Karen Stoner, and I live at thirty-four, twenty-five West Ten Cent Road. So I am in Saluda, and I care about a lot of things that have been brought up tonight. Um a couple of questions, going back to Mr. Oxer, if they're wanting a tax abatement, but gonna get fifty percent of it back, why not ask for a fifty percent tax abatement instead of a hundred percent? It's still getting the same amount of money, is my understanding, but it's going into the tax areas that it is to be used for. Um I am concerned about property values. Uh we've lived there for over thirty years, and that's, that's us, that's our heritage, that's what we have. Um I don't want our property value to go down to the extent where, if we have to downsize and sell, we don't have enough to buy another house or to move. Um I am concerned about contamination in the wells, a lot of people have wells in the area, and they're not all used, but still, they're there and they can be used, not if they're contaminated. Um I'm concerned about pollution as far as looks. Uh you know, people are talking about noise and other things, I'm concerned about the looks. Um I know you're talking about buffers and whatnot, but I've traveled in the last month and drove past solar farms, and they're not pretty. You know, it's nice to drive to our house along the highway and look at the fields and see the wheat and see the corn. It it's, it's pretty and it's what should be there. It's nice to see the the wildlife, the deer, the turkeys, uh bobcats, whatever it is you see out in the fields. When you're driving along and just see mirrors, it it's just not a, a nice looking uh development. It it's, to me, agriculture is food, whether it's for animals or for people. The agriculture in our community should be used more for producing what the families need as far as nutrition and food for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner, three remarks. Sorry, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lisa Hammack, and I live at sixty-one, twenty-six North Four Hundred West in Mass. And I am for the solar project, we're one of the farmers that would benefit. Some of the reasons um that Tony and I have considered this is because four dollar corn and ten dollar soybeans, and all of these guys back here, they're production farmers, we're not, we're not just grazing, you know, do a little garden, we're doing thousands of acres, we do it to make money. These guys spend millions of dollars every year, seed, chemicals, fertilizer, and equipment, and all that money is spent in Jefferson County or the surrounding counties. So we need to diversify sometimes, though. My husband farms approximately six thousand acres, so this is a very small percentage for him. But what it does for us is, it assures us income over the time period. Um so when we do have four dollar corn or less, or ten dollar soybeans or less, that we know this money's coming in to pay property taxes, to make the equipment payment we need to make, or maybe a farm payment. My daughter was really upset about this, twenty-three-year-old Purdue graduate in agriculture. She kicking and screaming mad at us, like said, we'll take that same amount of money, go buy some more farms, and you can farm those. Okay, I agree to that. They also allow farming under sulfur. We can raise sheep, we can have bees. You know, I don't think people realize that we probably contaminate groundwater with the chemicals we spray in the spring and all summer long. You know, we're, we're, we're spraying pesticides and fungicides, we're spreading fertilizer, we're doing all those same things. So you know, we do no-till practices um a lot, so we, we try to not do that. We have cover crop, so we don't have as many weeds, so these guys are all, they're professions, they make money at this. This is just an opportunity then for them to keep their family farms and diversify. I'm like that guy, I don't wanna see five hundred houses on our farm, you know? But that's why we live way out in the country by ourselves, and we bought the farms around us, so we don't have close neighbors, we didn't want them. That's just our opinion. Um and I appreciate everybody's opinion, because it is important to Jefferson County. But I also see, we missed the boat many, many years ago, because people voted against it, because of the prostitutes that were coming to Jefferson County, because of the boat, that ultimately ended up in BB, and we missed that tax money. So I think this is an opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up the boat.
Yes ma'am?
Yeah, I'll speak. I usually don't speak, but I will, I'm Yvonne Thomas, I live on uh thirty-six, sixty-five West Prospect Road, and my husband and I, we're in favor of the solar farms, and we're going to be part of it. We also have five acres, ten acres on, right on the river, twelve miles downriver from here. We've had that camp since nineteen seventy-seven. Right across on the Kentucky side, I see Wise's Landing. I see the coal barges. You walk through the yard from the stuff, this stuff that falls out of the sky, and your feet's black if we don't get rain a lot of times. Think about IKE, that power doesn't stay in Jefferson County either. That power's shipped off in other states. So there's lots and lots and lots of things to consider. I know Mr. Goldie's concerned about his orchard. Well, my husband was married to a reed, and we've had reeds orchard since eighteen hundred and something. But what happened to the apple trees and the peach trees? The climate change? From all the smoke and all of the pollution? There's not gonna be pollution here, I'm not gonna see smoke. This is our farm ground. It's gonna be surrounded by trees. There's still going to be deer, and there's still going to be fox, and there's still going to be wildlife. Feeding on the grass and stuff that they're, they're going to seed with. The ground's not going to be barren. There's not any water wells on our property. We get our water from Kent Water. What we do with our property to protect it for my grandchildren and their children should be up to us. We had to give up farming a few years ago, because small farmers can't make it with the prices of seed and fertilizer and all the other junk. We're just trying to survive and keep our property and keep it for our generations to come.
Do I need to walk up there? I think everybody didn't see me in here. My name's Greg Stoner, I live three, four, two, five West Ten Cent Road. There are people here who stand to make a lot of money off of this proposed deal. There are people that are going to lose a lot of money off of this proposed deal. There are people saying, it's my property, I should be able to do what I want with it, and talking about generational farming. I wonder what the cost of that four dollar soybeans or twenty dollar corn is going to be in thirty years? The cost of that is going to be four hundred dollar corn, five hundred dollar beans. When you're trying to feed cattle, when you're trying to feed cattle, swine, chickens, that eat all the things that we're growing today, my grandchildren aren't gonna be able to afford to eat in thirty years. The cost of living is going to skyrocket, because we've taken farmland out of the equation. You can't replace beauty. Solar panels are ugly, doesn't matter who's looking at it, it's ugly as sin. I, I, I don't see really any good side to this. I know people that are here that were anti Marble Hill, they don't like the coal power, but the nuclear power's much more, much cleaner. But they fought it, so I don't see.
Service India, I didn't know how to do it.
Now, I mean, you talk about pollution, I understand that coal power's dangerous, it's dirty. Can you tell me, the reflection off of solar panels, reflecting off of the, off of the atmosphere, the ozone, is that not gonna raise the, drive temperature? It doesn't increase global temperatures? It's trapped heat? It has to be trapped in between the ozone and the earth, just like the carbon monoxide or the CO2 is trapped right now? Are we not just replacing one for another? Trapped heat? It can't, it can't go through the ozone, and it's reflecting sunlight back up to the ozone. Is this environmentally right?
Thank you, three, I'm Mr. Stoner, and we definitely, we knew going into this that there were the um seats here for and against this project, so we certainly understand the passion that's been shared. Um and um and I know you all recognize that solo, sole decisions aren't, aren't sitting with this governing body, but we, um apologize for being here, and and we want to listen, I know I, I do for sure. Um and obviously, there are no decisions being, being made tonight, and that word abatement that was indeed on the agenda, and I know a lot of people showed up tonight wondering if need have ever been made, so there's a lot for all of us to learn, I think, and additional questions that that will be asked and answered, so keep asking them, keep doing your research for sure. Any, any remaining, I think we may have one more that we'd like to, and we're not gonna, not gonna cost you that opportunity, let's take one more.
Sure. If, if you have another resident, I would rather, I'm from Clark County, so um.
Any other Jefferson County residents?
Anybody from that?
That would like to speak. We're gonna try our very best to stick with our three-minute time.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
On food production, grain is exploding in the world. Right now, there's massive supplies in every corner of the world. The technology that's been developing, and grain is going, is coming in huge amounts. In Indiana, you look at the huge loss of farmland, that this state's saying, production is up, and that's true everywhere. And it's really, it's interesting reading if you wanna look into it, because it's counterintuitive, but it, it is fact. So, thank you.
And your name, sir?
Steve Blue Cluffer, seven-four, seven-five, West Jackson Road.
Okay, I think we have one, yes, right, another one?
Um yeah, I was at the city council meeting a couple weeks ago, and this actually sent me on a journey in civic engagement. My name is Erica Wilson, and I live at thirty-two-three North Five Thirty-three West Mass, Indiana. My husband owns a small homestead. Um I think I'm glad that there is not gonna be a vote taken tonight, because I think that did sort of panic people when they saw it on the agenda, and oh gosh, it's gonna be decided and it's all gonna happen. And I think that continuing a public dialogue is a very good thing, and I hope that that happens. And I hope that as all of you sitting around this table tonight on the decision-making side, I hope that you haven't made a decision yet, because I think it's too soon. I think there's still many, too many questions on the half, the citizens, for or against, I'm not taking a side. My, my point is, I hope that as a county, we proceed really thoughtfully and cautiously, and and are really thorough in the process to figure out what we should do here in a way that benefits the most people. Um because our, our county and city government, they're not just here to government, govern for the people who have the most money, uh they're not just here to govern for the people who voted for them, they're here to govern for all of us. And I appreciate you all sitting there in this courtroom and taking the time to listen to everyone again, and I love that everyone has come here to, to say their piece. Um and I think that's the beautiful thing about the country that we happen to live in, that we can actually do this. Um and I wanna see those lines of dialogue kept open, and I'm probably gonna be emailing all of you, because I'm more of a writer than a speaker, uh but I appreciate so much the effort that has been put and the passion in every single person in this room, I think that's a beautiful thing, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. There are very valid questions um about the effects of solar, about the, you know, should they really get a tax abatement? I mean, there are valid questions on both sides, and I came here tonight to learn and to listen, and I have learned and I have listened. And I hope that as a community, we have a very special community here in Marison, Jefferson County, and if you ask anyone who lives here, they will tell you that. This is a very special place, and I would hate to see it be torn apart by an issue like this. This is a very special place, and I would hate to see it be torn apart by an issue like this. We're friends and neighbors here, we really truly are a community. And I was, I was, I just drove out to Saluda, the Ten Cent Loop, yesterday. It, it's, it's a beautiful place, it's a special place, and I hope that whoever governs us understands that and needs with that heart. Thank you very much, Karen.
Right, I believe we have one more interested in sharing.
Are you sure?
Let's, let's go and bring it up. Let's take our three minutes, okay?
I'm not gonna take three minutes. I'm, my name's Sandy Dashell, I live in Clark County, Indiana. I did not ride with Max today.
But, but that's, that's okay, Max is for solar and I'm against solar.
And we're talking.
Yeah, well, and honestly, I don't wanna say that I'm against solar because I'm not against solar. You guys have one chance to get this right, okay? So whether it's three hundred foot setback, six hundred and fifty foot, which Clark County has currently right now, you need to make sure you get it right. I agree with these guys who own the property, they should be able to do whatever they wanna do with their property. But I also can see it from the other aspect of that, that whatever they do on their property shouldn't adversely affect their neighbors. And, you know, a setback is something that does that. So, you know, just like I said, you guys have one shot to get this right. There's other counties, I've, I have, I know more about solar than I ever wanna know, ever. I, I mean, I, you know, but, and I, but yeah, I don't know everything. I mean, you know, you got guys here that know a whole lot more than I know. But I do know that there are counties across Indiana that are regretting the decisions that they have made when it comes to their setbacks and things like that in their ordinances. So, like I said, you got one shot to get this right. So there is, I, I mean, other than these guys wanting to get the ball rolling and getting started, this is your all's county, and you guys should, should really think about, you know, what you're gonna do and not make any hasty decisions, so.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming to Madison and for sharing. All right, and our long meeting a little longer than, than norm for us, but we do wish you a good ten minutes for being here tonight. Any additional questions from our council? Our next meeting is August thirteenth, this month was postponed a week because of the fair, successful forage fair last week, but we'll be meeting August thirteenth in the spirit room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
For adjourn?
Second, second, Mr. Denny, hold those in favor? Everybody have a safe evening.